Salam salam, we come to finance.
Kalangan, we report what is on supplement to committee in finance, I have a bonus Senator Joseph, chairman in finance.
Kalangan kami, main speaker, only by an, Patua, I been, the kita yen, Patuan Patian, maasen sakaratan, kapung, kaipuni wawu, ranwawu, mokomuliyan kitiyam, momotwocho, kalalalang wasakan, mokonan toki. Protonan momo dey, chungalwawun komi, by speaker, floor leader, honorable member, Kankorusia, mekaj. Speaker man, Patuan Pata, sabun momo, committee muunio, yata komogidiu, jalan kak, pokata maasani, o kuku puriyam, standing committee report number, papke, Isaac Ulebnyarri, Isaac Riau, pekariyaman.
Pokpokta, rokariyaman, jalan katianan, maasen open standing committee report, papke, Isaac Ulebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sabulman kita. Koros mo utung, komoguto maasaniye, uwong maasani show, motion poitaro, trykatkatnan, maasen open report, we have a bonus, chairman in finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan kami, main speaker, ibaan Patuan Tienki, ai Patuan Kamelil, member in committee muunimie, sabulmalai, ta raichungal, matapatau. Tabu sutsulupilipilong, member Kankorusia. Yei report watch me, sungo sungan kaprotongnan momo, komo tangan kosunet number, silubukut paisek, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Mowito sangre, kabinasang, sabulmatay, kempaan, kamarain. Nduan kempaan, kamarain, sungo sungan, ala, kupura legislature. Nkamaket, cha cha ke, maasantiyam, nan, sabulmatay, pati, nafy twenty-two, naapali, paluwa. O kamaket, kamaket alang, wasake me, re, Patuan Tiarata, maana, temie. Yaralap, kayunanan, meya, school ke, me, Rep, Patuan Tiarata me, pan meya, shortage, pointen, chuntoto. Karate, Rep, Patuan me, main, technical oversight, you nen, duan, pati, te, kapanakun, benet. Reprojection, me, Rep, Patuan Wiam, schooli, Riau, the shulu, bana, naane, ren, tapunuki, muuni, kant, sang, politikan, and, kaki char, point chuntoto. Kaidegin kalautlan, pointen chuntoto, when kak, weewe. Riau meya, pil, anaan, ke, Patu, bano, siyi, bano, option, director me, agin, saban kiyang, school kan, me, karasepe, yei, pointen, diol, pointen, biil. Bampil meya, funding shortage, um, baluku ko. Hari, balinao din muunime, bahan, moket yei, Patu sang, bahan, pointen chuntoto, om, bahan, kempaw. Yei meya, wasa me, tepala, muunime, kasan tiyang, er, tepala, wima, bahan, sungan, ut, kamaket alang, wasakan. Hari, asansal, lang report, Kamelil, member, katarapwey, you, miya, iran, ke, nama, nan, sungan kak, asansal, tamet. Wawu, karakaraka.
Motion close, beat, kalangan, by speaker. Kalangan Senator Joseph, uwong, kawewe, Premier Ayer, uwong report, asansal, me, Premier Ayer, motion, jalan, rotung, tim maasenepen. Koros mo utung, jalan, rotung, tim maasenepen, report, papke, Isaac Ulebnyarri, Isaac Riau, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try rotungtiyam, maasenepen, report. Koros mo utung, jalan, sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Ulebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sang, committee in finance, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Ulebnyarri, Isaac Riau.
Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Walula, and, Isaac Riau, me pit, legislature, pin number, silubki, Isaac Silula, and, Isaac Riau. San testa, mumi, committee in finance.
Kalangan chief, chairman in finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan kami, main speaker, niwawu, karakaraka, pil, member, sabun momo, committee muunio. Yata komogidiu, momotwochankak, pokata, katarapwey, o, ketskiyam kupure. Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, pekariyaman.
Pokpokta, rokariyaman, jalan katianan, maasenepen, standing committee report, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sabulman kita. Koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try katkatnan, maasenepen, we have a bonus, Senator Joseph.
Speaker, main speaker, yei, report watch, member, plio, kaprotongnan, momo, komo tangan kosunet, number, silubukis, Lisa Kono, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Me ya, pil, wightto sang, option, kabinasang, sabulmatay, kempaan, public safety. Nduan kempawu, sungo sungan, ala, kupura legislature, om, pil, kamaket, ban, cha cha, nan, paluwa. Socho muunikap, nyar, bahan, kamaketasang, muunike, san tiyang, bahan, division in pop, division in security, police and security, o, kamaket, talang, bahan, sabulman director, da, chungal, pali. When kak, point, position Riau, yei, administri, kalautlan, pointen administrative officer, o, ew, position kap, yei, human resources. Lebnyar so watch, nan, tokpok watch, e, pilipayan, toto'yu, ma, committee Patuan Wiam, Patuan, standing committee report, number, papke, pailebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Sang, komogidiu, sang, five speaker, committee kak, cha kata, wia, ben, toto'yu, me, director, runga, me, director, wia, nduan, eh, wuketala, position ke, nan, kempawu, amila, bahan, public security, o, promote, police officer, yeaman. Aman, and, wia, lak, the beat, chief, o, amen, wia, lak, major. Er, pil, sang, nikomogituwa, ime, pilaleta, tokpok watch, my action, isepen, chuntoto, yeaman, bahan, anaan, en, bitaw, sang, tama, meya, ansu watch. Er, when kak, asansal, socho muunikap, muunime, kait, bahan, sungan, apali, ke, tokpok watch, bahan, ni, takcha, nan, paluwa. Akjalan kak, kupure, tau, kamanata, yei, metri, wawu, motomochi, kalangan, main speaker.
Kalangan Senator Joseph, uwong, kawewe, and, maasenepen, report, meya, to, maasenepen, report.
Motion is sabulman kita, report.
Pokpokiu, Mayor. Om ya, kariyaman, pokjalan, rotung, tim maasenepen, report, koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try rotungtiyam, maasenepen, report. Koros mo utung, jalan, sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau.
Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Walula, and, Isaac Riau, me pit, legislature, pin number, silubki, paisek, Silula, and, Isaac Riau. San testa, mumi, committee in finance.
Kalangan chief, we report what is on committee in finance, I have a bonus, chairman in finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan, main speaker, misawun momo, chil, pil, member, plio, Patu, tatas, sabun, committee muunio, yata, yuk, komogit, momo, watchen kak, pokata, katarapu, ketskiyam kupure. Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, pekariyaman.
Kalangan, pokpokiu, Mayor, okariyaman, pokjalan, katianan, maasenepen, standing committee report, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sabulman kita. Koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try katkatnan, maasenepen, report, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan, main speaker, standing committee report, watch, sungo sungan, kaprotongnan, momo, komo tangan kosunet, number, silubukut paisek, Silula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, me, Patu dosang, bahan, sabulmatay, eh, palyan, walonkukum. Nduan, paluwa, chay, tokpok, ren, pil kak, neat, cha cha ke, mokasantiyam, om, pointen chuntoto, nan, paluwa, me payta. Poran kak, apali ke, anaan, payu, silu, may, juma, Patuan Shapu. Kayunanan, yei, epit, isepen, to pointen, sabulmalai, lebnyan, computer, information technology. Ren kak, kalautla, wia, ki, asansal, me, paluwa, me, pil, kin, tok, kalautu, ren kak, aleta, aramasemen, me, bahan, kak, and, wia, toto'ku, meri, katsi, nanan. Nan, kolongrong, ke, samalaro, paluwa, poratu, kasalaiyam, momo, tamer, committee muunie, o, chen, ko, me, meya, eh, system, your, revansion, and, implement, bahan, paluwa. Meri, anaan, ben, chuton, document, me, in, lap, ren kak, chapiata, o, kachangawi, system kapu. Riau, nanan, epit, anaan, POL, bahan, paliyo, solar, or, repilmenro program, since, sang, nan, personel, o, pil, kapachayang, tama, meya, ansu watch, when kak, tapun, anaan, POL, the gas. Keslu, nanan, epit, kalaut, pil, kalautlan, representation, fun, and, sungopung, labalap. Nduan, eh, pil, bahan, pil, ro, program, sang, bahan, personel, o, solar, ya, kit, lima buken, kak, kapachapa, tya, tama, meya. When kak, wia, ta, chala, isikit, lima buken. Om, representation, representation, fun, and, sungopung, labalap. O, yei, match, anaan, silu, watch, me, ala, tokpok, tokpok, watch, o, pil, plio, kaprayam, socho muunikap, re, programing, bahan, muunike, me payta, bahan, paliwa, naapali, anaan, silu, watch. Niwawu, motomochi, main speaker.
Kalangan Senator Joseph, uwong, kawewen, report, me, Mayor, meya, to, maasenepen, report. Motion rotung, tim maasenepen, report. Pokpokta, rokariyaman, jalan, rotung, tim maasenepen, report, koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, jalan, rotungtiyam, maasenepen, report. Koros mo utung, jalan, sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sang, committee in finance, round.
Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Wai, and, Isaac Riau, me pit, legislature, resolution, number, of, kiss, Lisa Kola, and, Isaac Riau. Sang, mumi, committee, resources and development.
Kalangan, we report what is on committee in resources and development, I have a bonus, chairman and, committee, eh, Senator Walter.
Kalangan speaker, ramona, iban, yang, Patu, yang, Patua, menjiyam ke, sunga, sakarang, kaipuni, wawu. Om, ben, pakita, kak, Patu, sabulmuk, lap, tokpok, tar, mochi, aming, ngang. Kaprotanang, wasa, wala, main, speaker, eh, chungalwawun komi, one to five speaker, floor leader. Eh, chungalwawu, members, Kankorusia, koros, me, yang, Patu, jalan, kalery. Speaker, wawu, main, Patuan, wanyandi, sabul, committee in RNT, o, yata, yuk, komogit, momo, ten, ketski, tak, katarapwey, o, maasani, standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, pekariyaman.
Pokpokta, rokariyaman, jalan, katianan, report, the maasenepen, report, papke, Isaac Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try katkatnan, maasenepen, report, we have a bonus, chairman in RNT, Senator Walter.
Kalangan speaker, eh, chunga, sakarungwawu, sabal. Speaker, standing committee report, papke, Isaac Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Itan, resolution, number, of, kiss, Lisa Kola, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Speaker, asansal, me, attachment, Riau, kapachapa, tiyang, eh, report watch, o, attachment, kan, me, ray, ray, page, of, kissa, ma. Asansal, me, attachment, eh, chachen, eh, gay, members, chachen, Patu, want, eh, ketski, sabulmete, chungal, kapi. O, committee, Kamelil, member, member, members, anaan, chungal, ke, yi, sumaw, when kak, katarapwey, out, abe, gan.
Kariyaman.
Sang, nikar, begal, speaker, men, pakita, report watch, ang, kapwata, lang, lakap, women, members, ang, kak, katarapwey, pekariyaman.
Asansal, mau, komoguto, debaktokwo, report watch, and, kapantala, om, wia, kupure, lakap. Koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, komogitwo, poitak, report, papke, Isaac, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, bahan, kapantala, om, lakap.
Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Wai, and, Isaac Riau, me pit, legislature, pin number, silubki, Isaac Walula, and, Isaac Riau. Legislature draft one, salam salam, we come to finance.
Kalangan chief, we report what is on, asansal, me, sang, committee in finance, I have a bonus, chairman in finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan kami, main speaker, pil, member, plio, tatas, sabun momo, committee, o, yata, yuk, komogit, momo, watchen kak, pokata, katarapu, ketskiyam kupure, standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Riau, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, pekariyaman.
Komogidiu, om ya, kariyaman, pokjalan, katlanan, maasenepen, komo tangan, the report, number, papke, Isaac Riau, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sabulman kita. Koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try katkatnan, maasenepen, report, we have a bonus, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan speaker, speaker, report watch, recommend me, uwong, kupuku, uwong, kosunet, number, silubukut, Isaac Walula, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau. Asansal, me, kait, katsi, ngan, nan, watawatke, yu. Abu, ki, me, concern, me, porata, an, chung, me, kait, bahan, katsi, nan, watawatke, Riau, ime, ala, tokpok, watch, e, pralang, committee, kak, cha, kowatres, concerno. Concerno, kati, ji, ki, me, muunime, tokpok, temie, toto'ku, unse, lar, nduan, eh, apali, to, chuntoto, gen, masliki, ke, yu, kempaan, rusunma. Er, nduan, committee, eh, to, lau, kachi, irawu, kadi, raka, me, yei, mealan, meya, chuntoto, gen, masliki, lato, or, win, punte. Abil, meya, cha, anaan, ben, irai, me, ke, o, yang, aki, irai, ben, ei, ei, ren, pil kak, lato. Wia, ki, anaan, chok, cha, o, nurse, ta, ngak, an, om, pali, rusunma. Er, muuniwach, me, tokpok, temie, me, bana, pali, irai, lakan, me, saik, lato. Asansal, me, kait, katsi, kamanata, chalal, men, nan, sama, om, bana, pali, silo, gen, pali, rusunma. Er, muuniwach, we, toto'ku, or, ansu watch, chala, lima, kit, sama, kariyam, wana, kit, maluwa. Atama, tokpok, temie, yei, chala, bana, lima, kit, when kak, tapun, socharin, pointo, irai, lakan, me, saik, lato. Nan, itinerary, me, paliwa, kasalai, committee, konsanti, me, silo, ku, bawiawu, nan, sung, pun, September, nan, sung, bana, wat. Er, paliwa, pil, tokpik, chema, bana, motang, arab, bana, kaka, chen, kama, tangato, kama, tangala, silo, koto, chuntoto, kupu, wia, ki, anaan, me, asansal, me, nin, karworo. Yei, match, er, re, programing, bahan, sector fund, bahan, pali, rusunma. E, pil, asansal, me, rebelali, tier, kupure, ente, N O I A, kamanaman, meya, communication, me, kasalai, ta, me, O I A, utyung, wawyawi, kupura, legislature, and, kak, asansal. Ar, report watch, men, tokpik, niwawu, karakaraka, jalan, katlanan, watawatke, Riau, kamanata, chala, bana, lima, kit, when kak, tapun, muunika, meduwa, tiyan, nan, kadi, silo, gen, paluwa, when kak, apali, anaan, ben, chuntoto, lap, me, nin, lap, mealan, ansu watch, poran kak, lato, ansu, yu, me, ke, yu, konan, omat. Niwawu, karakaraka, main speaker, kalangan.
Kalangan Senator Joseph, uwong, kawewe, me, Mayor. Mayor, pil, komogidiu, jalan, rotungti, maasenepen, report, koros mo utung, motiono, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try rotungtiyam, maasenepen, report. Koros mo utung, jalan, sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Riau, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, maasaniye. Uwong, maasani show, motion poitaro, try sabulman kita, report, papke, Isaac Riau, Lebnyarri, Isaac Riau, sang, finance, round. Mea, to, chief.
Salam, sir, speaker. Asalara, I have a bonus, floor leader, Abram. Kalangan speaker, niwawu, member, sekarang, mot, kesembalwo, chup, tokpik, jalan, suspend, order of business, o, kati, ya, pali, number, Isaac Silu, me, yei, unfinished business.
Me, kariyaman, ben, motiono. Pokpokta, rokariyaman, jalan, katianan, base, Isaac Silu, yei, unfinished business, wia, ki, me, kariyaman, ben, motiono, ai, me, bahan, wia, wuk, try katkat, chil, for, number, Isaac Silu, we have a bonus, chief, led.
Standing committee report, number, papke, Isaac Wala, and, Isaac Riau, me pit, floor motion, regarding, the one million appropriated in sale, number, ten, L, seven, eight, twenty-two, for repair and improvement of paved roads in the state of Ponte. Sang, salam, we come to kapatabat, finance of public works, transportation and communication.
Speaker. Kalangan, we report what is on, asansal, me, sang, committee in finance of public work, I have a bonus, chairman in finance.
Speaker, man, pokjalan, jalan, komal, maasenepen, service.
Yeah, pokpokiu, jalan, komal, minute, yo, jalan, komal, minute, yo.
Kalangan, Ouk Taisa Baler o Iban Bonasa Chairman in Finance ong Kamogedan eh, Taylan Katrien nan Masanepan Report.
Kalangan, komi main speaker niwawo karagaraka men pliyow kamoged kumomotwot Taylan Kak. Pokata, Maasani o Koko Puriyang standing committee report nantetapki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Tagariamen.
Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Katrien nan Masanepan Standing Committee Report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw o Sabulman kita. Koros mo utung motion o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Senator Joseph.
Kalangan speaker, ben pliyow kalipawotepan report wot nyorala main speaker. Yay report yu mne, kamoged yu mailaki kometika pachapachan finance o public works ang kak chia kata, wiyepen millionew mne momotwot kamanata ben kakapali onontan Sabulmatay laalak edwin konti. Hery reslu mne, paasana ta iran kamoged twot, mne kayunure yay open bidding. Potana pueki PTA o ya agencyan state government ta resujer eligible o qualifieran yang pit. Hery longure, ime ipachowan ulian kiti committee kapachawo sakarikiita mne, eh, mui muiita paan Sabulmatay FMR the Financial Management Regulation mne wiyunuransuwet. Mie citation pachan nan report. Hery aunure yay disparity in cost estimate mne PTA ipachowan wiyata o katairang kapinakwen. Kak wuyaminsusow ong totokalan millionewa. Hery concern mne mie, damakareta ong based on linear feet ah, wypoinan towen munime paan napali wukubeseng. Karasepe, mie wasama motomot, mumu ananepen munien laut yang mie mokmok wasama reiri. Hery, mok committee kapachapach, bergrin PTA iran kak. Kachikidetak pachuwanti, karepekan nan tarowet, hery essential mne resujer lelato. Atamesu wut pachuwan wuya stavaleti sangni pachow. Hery damara pachowan mne, melen wasama motomot kakache pueki totoko elel nan raroo paan anen rar. Song koros paan poosang o paan pliyow repay. Ah wasama reiri mne poychikachik, repil kusuyam mne, pueki tene reservicingte mne wiyawi. O totokin preposujono laut wetoche wasama motomoto. Mui mne luka kuyata disparity in cost estimate mne concern mne. Kesluunure pitata oong momon kamogedepen munien PTA nan pugan sabmatay tempaan treasury yu paluwar. Hery essential mne mie MOU yu sujokopi, sebil request, sebil peki copyan luka essential na committee kapachapachan lusujer lelato. Hery wikevem tepenefiteta tauat mne mie MOU yu mne. Yay treasury mne manage o administer munien PTA korus ye. Munim proachan kan mne sujilipilpil wasare pachosang ye, gen lelato nan sabmatay kupulap. Ananwe wewena mne paluryawo wya ra knut kamoged munika mne kina kuali isapentotong kan mne PTA. Hery rawet main speaker, sebil pachowan kasalaya ta mne wya concern laut yu ong committeean mun. O committeean munipil ruprup, jongosong enaleti eh kawitkan. O maasujeyo sang wiyapi bankak wuyawo pueki lipelan munikin mokmoged nan new tar kakache millionew riyaw sju du. Ah legislators jumwangi. Hery okoneng legislatoring kak wangi wiyepen transaction onan pugan PTA yu treasury. Emakareta mie totoki yu mokmoged nan committee asukwen. Kak utang kasalaya tu recommend song wiyapokoneng en wiyawitken en kak more transparent. Hery resluwet main speaker imele ta committee eh men kawitke. Ong irekay yu yaramen kachayil katukalan PTA kachayik talang kapinah. Kapinahan pokowaki o kasaneti wiyepen totong. Karepe, accountability yu en kak pachapach, wasay mne moktangkoneng and accountable for. Pa mie pitakpen project woyuraan ah ismogeday paan kachi tadjuwango katek yay kapinah. Karyaw oong disparity yu eh ime sebil essential pueki totong kan nekukwokpeseng asujepesong linear feet. Apo pesong wen totok mananepen wiyawit o ngkamaulan allap emakareta wukwokin estimate mne. O kesluunurew eh committeean munian show yu wa paan si pilong wiyepen recommendation woga kapali concern mne. Eniwawo karagaraka main speaker nyorala pi may bankak pliyow and kalipa outepan report.
Kalangan Senator Joseph, kawe wew, ney mne mie ayar. Mie tuma Masanepan Report. Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Rutungti Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung motion o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Tayran Rutungtiar Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Tayrabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw.
Standing committee report number papki isakolay and isakryaw. Mapit oversight hearing in respect to the projects to better Bombay within the fiscal years 2020 and 2021. Sangsaan me committee Public Works Transportation and Communication eh committee report tillay sang calendar July 11, 2022.
Kalangan Chief, report wot yang committee Public Works the BWTC eh Iman Bonasa Chairman, the Vice Chairman eh Abis Junior.
Kalangan Mr Speaker, mwen munai ban pachow aim bengma isakapang wawakan and patan rumatyang erkan. Wonggin komi, Mr Speaker, Vice Speaker, Floor Leader, Royal Honorable Sergeant, Corrus. Nyangagi, wangi staffan oma pachang kai rango. Mr Speaker men, ulianti committee Public Works. Wiyata kamoged momotwot dan Sabulman kita standing committee report papki isakew lainri isakryaw.
Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Katrien nan Masanepan Standing Committee Report papki isakew leplinyarri isakryaw Sabulman kita. Koros mo utung kamoged o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, kamoged poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Senator Abis.
Kalangan Mr Speaker. Eh, committee Karongero Business and Transportation and Infrastructure the TNI project kan nan fiscal year riakit riisak leli riisakryaw. Administrator Isuna Anken John Adolph o project manager Ricky Lipen mne wya witness. Oversight watch, peki update in project kan nan fiscal year riakit riisak leli riisakryaw. Map, witness kan reportki riakit isaktwaw den riisakryaw. Tes, tesmonikan kasalaya tameh project kan nan pa fiscal year riakit isaktwaw or riisak kapantala pake law suitew. Law suit wot mawon o Administration Cup Puranger Taulan project kan. Witness kan bin kasalaya tameh project kan nan riakit isaktwaw palilaut maulan tukampleet. Authoraling renovation in school mapopant pueki apolensuwet. Aji office renovation panjular wiyawi pueki office cup paan wiyawita. Project kan mne wiyawyer nan pa riakit riisak yay Pex Trade and Industries o Sakre elementary school. Pex renovation mne nan present tuisaklimau wen complete Sakre elementary school maular. Project and renovation mne essential plan nakla tokotok nan fiscal year riakit riisake wyeit chamal elementary school, one elementary school, Konya E C, Sakre E C, Felen E C o obisin oate. Pit wiyawyer nan mayan parwet o ngchaman o one elementary school. Review o evaluation maluwa, school trikan nimi nan pit process match. Pil pachang project kan ekay funded sang general fund o palilaut sang foreign aid o FCM Congress. Mne bil essential nan attachment nan report wot. Report sang TNI, pil kasalaya tameh PMU project til tautaula. Salatak dispensary maular tukampleet, waterline sang Sakre elel nan pimwel school phase one o phase two ongoing. Project chocho listed nan report o attachment watch. Mr Speaker, i match orlaben committee report wot o committee peki momotwot en pokata o kamanada.
Kalangan Mr Speaker. Kalangan Senator Abis o ngkawe wew, ney mne essentialer, mie tuma Masanepan Report. Masular, abekpeki yu mie ayar Taylan Rutungti Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung motion o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Tayrutungtiar Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isakew leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Tayrabulman kita report papki isakew leplinyarri isakryaw sang committee Public Works. Mie tuma Chief.
Kalangan Speaker men, pliyow segero mokesempolwot ju, ketaka moged Taylan Kak ketyo palin ambejak pay mne pil calendar. Tagariamen.
Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Katrien pil calendar o mie karyamen pen motiono. Halatak Kaitkatkutjer pon pil calendar o Iban Bonasa Chief Clerk.
Legislature pin number silipki riisakmanola and isakryaw for file.
Tayl kumalma men tim.
Kalangan, main speaker niwawo karagaraka men wiyata kamoged Taylan Kak. Pokata Maasani o Katskyang pora Tayl kamodamosunet nampen silupurri isakmanola leplinyarri isakryaw. Tagariamen.
Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Katrien nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung motion o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Tayrabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw.
Standing committee report number papki isakolay and isakryaw. Mapit oversight hearing in respect to the projects to better Bombay within the fiscal years 2020 and 2021. Sangsaan me committee Public Works Transportation and Communication eh committee report tillay sang calendar July 11, 2022.
Kalangan Chief, report wot yang committee Public Works the BWTC eh Iman Bonasa Chairman, the Vice Chairman eh Abis Junior.
Kalangan Mr Speaker, mwen munai ban pachow aim bengma isakapang wawakan and patan rumatyang erkan. Wonggin komi, Mr Speaker, Vice Speaker, Floor Leader, Royal Honorable Sergeant, Corrus. Nyangagi, wangi staffan oma pachang kai rango. Mr Speaker men, ulianti committee Public Works. Wiyata kamoged momotwot dan Sabulman kita standing committee report papki isakew lainri isakryaw.
Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Katrien nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung motion o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Senator Abis.
Kalangan Mr Speaker. Eh, committee Karongero Business and Transportation and Infrastructure the TNI project kan nan fiscal year riakit riisak leli riisakryaw. Administrator Isuna Anken John Adolph o project manager Ricky Lipen mne wya witness. Oversight watch, peki update in project kan nan fiscal year riakit riisak leli riisakryaw. Map, witness kan reportki riakit isaktwaw den riisakryaw. Tes, tesmonikan kasalaya tameh project kan nan pa fiscal year riakit isaktwaw or riisak kapantala pake law suitew. Law suit wot mawon o Administration Cup Puranger Taulan project kan. Witness kan bin kasalaya tameh project kan nan riakit isaktwaw palilaut maulan tukampleet. Authoraling renovation in school mapopant pueki apolensuwet. Aji office renovation panjular wiyawi pueki office cup paan wiyawita. Project kan mne wiyawyer nan pa riakit riisak yay Pex Trade and Industries o Sakre elementary school. Pex renovation mne nan present tuisaklimau wen complete Sakre elementary school maular. Project and renovation mne essential plan nakla tokotok nan fiscal year riakit riisake wyeit chamal elementary school, one elementary school, Konya E C, Sakre E C, Felen E C o obisin oate. Pit wiyawyer nan mayan parwet o ngchaman o one elementary school. Review o evaluation maluwa, school trikan nimi nan pit process match. Pil pachang project kan ekay funded sang general fund o palilaut sang foreign aid o FCM Congress. Mne bil essential nan attachment nan report wot. Report sang TNI, pil kasalaya tameh PMU project til tautaula. Salatak dispensary maular tukampleet, waterline sang Sakre elel nan pimwel school phase one o phase two ongoing. Project chocho listed nan report o attachment watch. Mr Speaker, i match orlaben committee report wot o committee peki momotwot en pokata o kamanada. Kalangan Mr Speaker.
Kalangan Senator Abis o ngkawe wew, ney mne essentialer, mie tuma Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw. Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Koros mo utung Tayrisabulman kita report papki isaklimau leplinyarri isakryaw.
Kalangan Speaker, kusunet wot ime essentialer nan standing committee report nantetapki isakisul leplinyarri isakryaw. Pokpakeyow sang sabmatay kampaan kamarayen kak kamoged chia chia key mne shantiyan nan sabmatay pachatin parwet. En kak moged sang wasama repachoye o moged lang wasakey mne paluwo tiyaratam mne ananepen mne. En kak tapun so charen chia chia mne pachonan paluwoko. Ni motomot main speaker.
Speaker, kaya kumalma Masanepan Speaker. Tayl kumalma. Kalangan Speaker Tayl. Balay Iban Bonasa Chairman in Finance.
Kalangan komi main speaker, itungol sakar misikpaan guburan momo atunsak. Iman pachowan kapungala itungol kamoged me ipachowan wiyayomowe. Taylan Kak, pokata, kataropoe o Sabulman kita kamodan nampen silupukit paiseki leplinyarri isakryaw.
Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Katrien nan Masanepan Kamodangkusunet Silupukit Paiseki leplinyarri isakryaw. Mapit one, koros mo utung motion o Maasani Yay, uwong Maasani So, Motion Poytar o Kaitkatkut nan Masanepan Report. Kamu Senator Joseph.
Speaker, yay kamodangkusunet wot, essentialer nan standing committee report nantetapki isakpay leplinyarri isakryaw. En kak kamanata wan muniyu kalautela, woinan chundotokmen mit pachupacho paan opisinkapinah. Mne, opiskap yu mne kachayil kachinkawata sang nkusunet nampen isakli leplinyal wani isaklimau leplinyarri isakli. Yay kapakata opis yu mne ataniki eh, OTY. OTY opis yu bangin rapaki to uangato chia chia kan mne bangin pachosang masliki. Hery sangni kamodan kusunet wot ya, peina kap tutundotokme apapali kusunet wot pokow wipis chiala pala. Aimelata, pokwot yu wiyawita wen kak kalautela eh isaisin chundotokmen. Karyaw pachang match ananepen eh, wen muniyu ngakpachota wen kak apali eh commission allowance o ng economic planning commission. Mne pil pachopaan opisinkapinah o hi paluwot mne pil sawasewase palu eh opiskap wot. Niwawo motomoto kalagaraka main speaker.
Kalangan Senator Joseph o ngkawe wew, mao mne mie ayar. Mie tuma Masanepan Kamodangkusunet. Speaker. Pokpaktaro karyamen Taylan Rutungti Masanepan Kamodangkusunet. Mone Iban Bonasa Motiono makuproye wintonasa Masanepan Press.
Kalangan Mr Speaker. Eh, mone iban patrohan sewot ime patren sakran wawkan. Sutuyang committee finance. Eh, meseng rawet wasatwet wut Tayl kataburu mun. Patrohan mne nyansum mne pachetken wiyawita paan koros, treginnadzio mne pachetow en kak palents. Yay Tayl kataburu, personnel, kilaban, travel, ipatrohan mne mie prince benefitke mne kilaban pehita. Aimelata kawitansewet ma nyansuma committee kataburumunika sang ban personan kilanan travel o wasatwika. Ayah, yiran prince benefitkaw. Eh, bangkak essentialen kietkan mistriyang finance committee. Pueki ipatrohan kawkona paitungol floor amendment, mne men kawtalam. Aimelata kawit, materek kummalo. Aimelal, kawit, matayak, kumal, kawitka, koyang ye. Kalangan speaker.
Chail, katkatnan, masan iben, uh, komotankosunet, o, miyer, motion, chailen lutungti, masan iben komotankosunet. O, ibanalana, entertain ma, motion me, miye, weyke miyer, karyaman ben motiono. Koros mo utung, chailen lutungti, masan iben komotankosunet slipku, paisakyo, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, komupuras, Senator Perez. Weyke, kusunet wot, chailan, watawat kayu. Koros mo utung, komotankosunet slipku, paisakyo, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion wot, poytarok, chaykamanalar, komotankosunet wot, niwatawat kayu.
Legislature pin number riapke isakisula and riyesakyo, legislature draft one of bill for an act. Adding a new section to title one of Bombay code relating to honoring the symbols of the state and for other purposes, uniwatawat kayu.
Kalangan, chief weyke, kusunet, komotankosunet wot, wot, report sang committee in education, Ivan Ponas, Chairman.
Kalangan, main mister speaker, kesa palay tungolwaw. Niwaw, nangwalian ti samu committee in education, o, takimolwet, yangkak, sapulmanikita LP two seventeen dash twenty-one, oong first reading.
Pokpaktaro karyaman, chailen katlanan, masan iben komotankosunet riapke isakisula, labenyar riyesakyo. LT one, okamanalan, watawat kayu, koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chaitkatkatnan, masan iben komotankosunet. Senator Laka.
Kalangan, main mister speaker. Uh, LP two seventeen dash twenty-one. Isong songen, add a new section to section six dash one one ten. That bid honoring the symbols of the state at the commencement of its school day, oralap, main mister speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Laka, taimur kumalte ma, minute. Chail, kumal ma, itungol kalangan. Kail sa palero, Ivan Ponas, Senator Laka.
Kalangan, main mister speaker. Kesa palay tungolwaw. As I stated before, um, LP two seventeen dash twenty-one. That bid, um, honoring. Symbols of the state at the commencement of voice school day. Ni oralap, main mister speaker.
Kalangan, miyer motion, chailen lutungti, masan iben. Miyer motion, chailen lutungti, masan iben komotankosunet. Koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, chail lutungtiar, masan iben komotankosunet riapke isakisula, labenyar riyesakyo. LT one, koros mo utung motiono, chail sapulman kita, komotankosunet riapke isakisu, labenyar riyesakyo. LT one, o watawat kayu, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chail sapulman kitar, kusunet riapke isakisu, labenyar isakyo. LT one, kamui chief.
Legislature pin number slipki, bysakla and riyesa kryaw, legislature draft one of bill for an act. Amending by resections of state law number ten L dash sixty-four dash twenty-one. The comprehensive budget act for fiscal year 2022 and for other purposes, uniwatawat kayu.
Kalangan, main pulas, Chairman and Finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalangan ko may main speaker, niwawo karagarak man, komogit komumot kasumpalwet, chailen kak. Kachin, pokata kataropoe, uketskyang kubrochay, standing committee report nampes, papuki isakisula, labenyar riyesa kryaw. Kupurmak. Komodankosunet nampes, slipukipaisak, labenyar riyesa kryaw. Tagariam.
Kalangan, pokpaktaro karyaman, chailen katlanan, masan iben komotankosunet slipku, paisakyo, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, o sapulman kita, niwatawat kayu, koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Yei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chaitkatkatnan, masan iben komotankosunet. Senator Joseph.
Kalangan speaker, inangin komotankosunet wot, imasansal enan standing committee report nampes, papuki isakisula, labenyar riyesa kryaw. Ni mocho mocho oralap, yei, pokpakyosang samajay kampaan kamarain. Renkak, komakit chaychaykay me, pachotiang, pan. Poinan chuntadok me, kasukpemie me, sutupan anaanapen, ray komaktalang, wasakey, merapatchowan, diaratar me. Pan, kaka chen miye, suwcharen chaychay napali tadok, len, animan fiscal year wot. Hary, wasakan me, munikan pantokke, ikamelal, masansal enar wot.
Weyke, ninklos.
Niwaw karagarak, main speaker.
Kalangan, chail kombalma, minute. Kail sa palero, Ivan, entertain motiono, chailen lutungti. Komomotankosunet slipku, paisakyo, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, okamanalan, niwatawat kayu, koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chaykamanatar, komotankosunet wot, niwatawat kayu.
Legislature pin number slipki, isalisakunula and riyesakryaw, legislature draft one of bill for an act. Amending sale number ten L dash sixty-four dash twenty-one. The comprehensive budget act for fiscal year. The comprehensive budget act of 2022 and for other purposes, uniwatawat kayu.
Chairman Finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalanganan ko may main speaker, ibilman, plew pata sapul momo committee yo, yata, komogit momotwet, enkak. Pokata kataropoe, uketskyang kupura, komotankosunet nampes, slipukisalisakunul, labenyar riyesa kryaw, tagariam.
Pokpaktaro karyaman, chailen katlanan, masan iben komotankosunet slipku, isalisakunul, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, okamanalan, niwatawat kayu, koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chaitkatkatnan, masan iben. Senator Joseph.
Kalangan main speaker, yei komotankosunet wot, me, puitosang, samajay kampaan, papaliwana, pagmawta, public safety. Nintuan, anaan, kabukaya, paradan, paluwot, o, pokpokin chailen, pilka, kamanata. Renkak, komogitasang, chaychay, tamuni, pan. Police and security, o, papaliwanaan, kryaw, pan, opis and director, me, pan, papaliwana, position kapu, o, kalautlan. Uh, sapul marayl administration officer. O, labenyar swetje, bil, muitata, tadokalan, muni, poinkak, kalautela. Promotion kryaw, me, uyawiyang, police officer, yei, chief of, deputy chief, o, major. Ni mocho mocho oralap.
Kalanganan, promis, Senator Joseph, unka wewe, Mohammed Miayer, oong komotankosunet, miyeto masan iben.
Motion ninklos.
Pokpaktaro karyaman, chailen lutungti, masan iben komotankosunet slipku, isalisakunul, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, koros mo utung chail sapulman kita, komotankosunet slipku, isalisakunul. Labenyar riyesa kryaw, LT one, o watawat kayu, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chail sapulman kitar, komotankosunet slipku, isalisakunul, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, o watawat kayu.
Legislature pin number slipki, bysaksilula and riyesakryaw, legislature draft one of bill for an act. Further amending sale number ten L dash sixty-four dash twenty-one. Of, of the Bombay comprehensive budget act for fiscal year 2022 relating to the judiciary branch and for other purposes, uniwatawat kayu.
Kalangan, weyke komotankosunet wot, epitata money, Ivan Ponas, Chairman and Finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalanganan ko may main speaker, ibilman, plew pata sapul momo committee yun, muni. O, komogit komumot kasumpalwet, chailen kak, pokata kataropoe, uketskyang kubrochay. Komodankosunet nampes, slipukipaisak silu, labenyar riyesa kryaw. Tagariam.
Pokpaktaro karyaman, chailen katlanan, masan iben komotankosunet slipku, paisakyo, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chaitkatkatnan, masan iben. Kamui Senator Joseph.
Speaker.
Kamui Senator Joseph.
Ibilgak kalupak, yei komotankosunet wot, inangin, masansal, nan komota, ayan, report nampes. Papu isakto, labenyar riyesa kryaw, me, panapali, anaanapemie, mapartanan. Sapul majay, uh, molen kopungililen, win, donte. Niwaw karagarak, main speaker.
Kalangan, Senator Joseph, unka wewe, Mohammed Miayer, miyer, bil motion, chailen lutungti, masan iben. Koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chail lutungtiar, masan iben komotankosunet. Koros mo utung chail sapulman kita, komotankosunet slipku, paisaksidu, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, masan iyei. Uwong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chail sapulman kitar, komotankosunet slipku, paisaksidu, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, watawat kayu, ran. Speaker. Kamui Senator. Flo leader apron. Pokpilas, motion komupura, kesa palay tungol segaran waw. Speaker man, segaran, moto, pokpikcharen kak, kasamo, samajay, komisneren, PGA, me, yang, bachayang chail, ew, lepon lepon. Kalangan, Senator, the Flo leader apron, apron, o, komogit, winponas, kasideria, komisner, kompet, patran, sapul majay, uyakupur. Kalangan, miyeto, legislature pin number slipki, riyesakwalula and riyesakryaw, legislature draft one of bill for an act. Amending section three dash sixty of sale number ten L dash sixty-four dash twenty-one. The comprehensive budget act for fiscal year 2022 and for other purposes, unikryaw, kensaklamawat. Kalangan, chief weyke, komotankosunet wot, epitata money, Ivan, bil playo, Ponas, Chairman and Finance, Senator Joseph.
Kalanganan ko may main speaker, niwawo karagarak, man, plew, tata sapul momo committee yun, muni. Komogit komumot kasumpalwet, chailen kak, pokata kataropoe, o, ma, oneng, chaitkatlaw, kamanatan i. Kryaw, kimsaklan watawat. Tagariam.
Pokpaktaro karyaman, chailen katlanan, masan iben komotankosunet slipku, riyesakwalu, labenyar riyesa kryaw. LT one, otolaw, nan kryaw, kimsaklan watawat. Koros mo utung motiono, masan iyei. Mawong, masan isho, motion poytarok, chaitkatkatnan, masan iben. Speaker, kamui Senator Joseph.
Poinkak, blew kalupak, kusunet wot, iman, bil sainsal, nan standing committee report nampes, papu. Riyesaklimao, labenyar riyesa kryaw, nintuan, akupurpurla, committee yun, muni. Iblew check. Hary, ni mocho mocho, yei, yei, chalapaan, nan, lomogit me, samajay kemparo, sunmao. Pokpikyan kak, group program, sang wasakey, suw, pachotiang don, wasayume, kinapali, seilok. Poinkak, kapali eto, chuntadokwe, me, realitaro, katspatulukin. Uh, yei chalapaan, nan, lomogit. Niwaw karagarak, main speaker.
Kalanganan ko wewe, sang Senator Joseph, Chairman and Finance, Vice Speaker.
Kalanganan speaker. Eh, patrowan, kamelal, me, mia, komotan, waktakla, floor amendment, me. Iman, patrowan, yata, komogit, momotwet, enkak.
Tark floramenmen nampi apkriyasa ksidula blinyarriyasa kryaw sapulman kita.
Mayor kamagit iwo karyamang pen kamagitok talen tark. Floramenmen apkriyasa ksidula blinyarriyasa kryaw. Koros mo utung motiono masanieyi. Uong masaniso motion paitar o kaya masanipan floramenmen.
Kamui vice. Floramenman wad le obol sang Senator Loyola o Senator Mikell. Ong wosariaw me sungsumen pagpagmiyay kamelalame. Pan wala pa Senator Loyola kak kolale tami pan patawan ma esuto lewosakan. Ong wosariawan kakapali. Mister speaker. Ewosame patonan med. Talanen lumagit an kak patoyang junior police me sansal ranwet. Eh irail serime pulubulekan. Uyu ya kaskul and balwet. Nan win Goon Bay. Puni neysek miya kabal Goon Bay. Men kak sowasa keirtan maraini serikan. Ninduan uya pan kak elaka o amaran pan magitin kusunat. Yebil niyansowu magitwet. Yebil bahan sowasa an kak yang kaduk. Magit suudarakan makin portaren sapulmajail seridgedungkan. Rirowet ilin kasumpal melil. Puingkan miya esansal nan win madalanim poin riaw. Winu ew. Win kiti prinsilu. Win sagas poin riaw. Win atew o kolonia ew. Muyata piniysek miya ansawet. O muya kaskul bekat. Me me panabol pan public safety. O ni rukryaw mister speaker. Poki esansal me wellan ranin maymaw egusanan miya. Agtalan kak tapunikik sinjotrokan man patolanger paluwu. Talanen siliget silubki isaklimaw. An kak sowasa aktivitikan me panapali ranin maymaw. Ipatawan kamelin mumoniwut an kakapali fish. Ong registration makin tokewewewi. Nan win Goon Bay me pankin yang patong kamutongkan nan ranin maymaw. Pwen kasarawi ranin maymaw. Ni motomotmu. Armay jualkawesut lelai. Yebilman puluk. Chatong Senator Loyola an kak kolale. Kalangan speaker.
Kalangan promis vice speaker Mikell. Niyata masanipan floramenmen apkriyasa ksidula blinyarriyasa kryaw.
Speaker. Tega komal ma.
Naumal kupure. Pagpagiyo talen bil komal ma. Talen komal minidyo.
Na'um, alku, pur, pokpok, i, chailen, Bill Konmalma, chail, konmal, menitio. Tayshabal, ok, taykat katnan, masanepan Floramenmen, abkuri, Isaac Silula, Bill Nia Riza Croyal. Meyadre, masanepan Floramenmen.
Retungte, masanepan.
Pokpok taro karyaman, dalan retungti, masanepan Floramenmen, abkuri, Isaac Silula, Bill Nia Riza Croyal, koros mo'udung motiono, masanie. Ohong, masaniso. Mia, request in division. Tayban, tolanan, request in division. Tayban, usus, nikova. Chief. Koros, mo'udung, chailan sapul man kita, kamutang, Floramenmen, abkuri, Isaac Silula, Bill Nia Riza Croyal, masani, dakawata, ni, marai. Palimau. Koros, mesutu, ujung, kawata, marai, palimau. Taga konmalma, menitio. Weykak, tal, miminan, masanepan.
Motiono, ramu, ledi.
Tay miminan, masanepan kamutangko Senator silubuki Riza Walu, Bill Nia Riza Croyal, LT one. Meyadre, masanepan.
Speaker.
Komu, Senator Perez.
Kalangan, speaker. Bo'gi, atay, katkat, koto, lel, wasabis, me, say, sakrumpung, ben, i, ay, men, paton, yankak, masanepan, film, mia, sawet, oh, Floramenmen, koros, yankak, kawantalan, lakop. Taga karyaman.
Pokpok taro karyaman, kamutangko Senator silubuki Riza Walu, Bill Nia Riza Croyal, LT one, oh, Floramenmen, koros, me, pitata, kamutangko Senator water, yankak, pantang, lakop. Koros, mo'udung motiono, masanie, ohong, masaniso, motion poitaro, me, ban, uya.
Speaker.
Komu, Vice Speaker.
Kalangan, speaker, bo'gi, analan, kupungmal, oh, sapal, ben, apali, tetongkan, yankak, ney, or, pro, eh, on, ni, rokan, me, kupur, chail, yankak, sarang, pesang, ah, bo'gi, yankso, ami, ada, speaker, iman, waw, sekarang, kupur, muyo, membeskan, chailan, ketsan, yupur, sapal, ben, lakop, klo, kisak.
Pokpok taro karyaman, chailan, ketsan, yupur, sapal, ben, lakop, klo, kisak, koros mo'udung motiono, masanie, eh, ohong, masaniso, motion poitaro. Chail, konmal, tio.
Speaker, pakai.
Pakai.
Oh, komendian.